...after a deadly hit-and-run accident at this intersection that killed 11-month-old Judith Ascencio in 2009.
When you drive through the areas of Westlake, Pico Union, understand you're driving through our neighborhoods. Understand you're putting our children's life at risk if you don't pay attention to the traffic signals.
Councilmember Reyes was joined by kids from the nearby Camino Nuevo Charter School, the Los Angeles Police and Transportation Departments to unveil the new traffic light. Officials say the intersection now boasts several features to improve public safety in this area.
People who are visually impaired can still use the signal safely, and they can feel the vibrating signal on the plate to cross the street.
Senior transportation engineer at the Department of Transportation, Varej Genoan, also said the lines of the painted crosswalk are wider and therefore help make pedestrians much more visible to motorists. And instead of having cars stop at the crosswalk, they now have to stop five feet behind it.
So this is just not a light. It's literally a beacon of safety.
Police officials say that since 2000, there have been a total of 54 traffic accidents at this intersection, but they hope to reduce that number with the new light.
Thank you to the area's office. We have something that the community needs.
A new traffic light that officials hope will save lives. I'm Yana Kay for LA This Week.
The hit-and-run driver was arrested and charged with drunken vehicular manslaughter. A new monument now greets visitors to Panorama City's LAPD Valley Traffic Division. It honors traffic cops who died while working to make LA more traffic safe. Anna Marcos takes us to the unveiling.
Even LA firefighters came to pay tribute as the LAPD's Valley Traffic Division in Panorama City unveiled the special memorial monument.
Three, two, one. The unveiling is now.
Beautiful. There it is.
Wow.
There it is.
This end-of-watch monument honors the seven Valley Traffic Officers who died in the last 40 years while keeping LA streets and motorists safe. Carachillo, Meznerly, Schmidt, Evans, Dean, Marshall, and Verna. Many of the families were on hand to remember.
Actually, I wish my daughter would have got to know my father.
They were officers who often dealt with accidents like the one Captain Jeff Burt had his first day on the job. A teen driver had overturned his car, killing himself and two others.
It looked like the corner of Armageddon. But then I saw my cops. They brought calm to calamity, restoring order.
Anyone who walks into the LAPD's Valley Traffic Division will see this memorial 20 feet up in the air with the names of the fallen traffic officers on it. As you can see right now, there is scaffolding for people to see it, but soon it will be hanging midair.
This is really a celebration of the lives of all those who've risked ultimately and given that ultimate sacrifice.
Chief Charlie Beck remembered not only the fallen traffic cops, but all LAPD officers who have died on his watch.
Since I've been a Los Angeles police officer, which is just over 36 years, we've lost 53. And when we do a memorial every year, I remember every one of those.
They died on LA streets, but here on this wall, their memories now find a resting place forever. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
The memorial created by artist Tim Lambros took 10 months to make. Chief Charlie Beck was given a small replica to hang in his office. Last year, a team of thieves who preyed on the elderly in the valley were caught and property recovered. The Los Angeles Police Department is now searching for the owners of the stolen property and need your help. Cindy San Luis has more.
Beginning in January of 2012, a series of distraction burglaries plagued elderly victims in the San Fernando Valley and the city of Glendora.
The typical scenario is the suspects would use a ruse, always target elderly victims, and either state they were from Department of Water and Power or were conducting some sort of construction or working on their neighbor's wall to get the person in the home into the backyard.
While we call them suspects, they truly are predators. They focused their crimes on not only the elderly, but the disabled.
Police say these individuals would carry a clipboard or measuring tape to look more official and spend 20 to 30 minutes with the victim in the backyard while one or two other people would then enter and ransack the house.
In May of last year, a vigilant member of the community gave our West Valley Area detectives the first break on the case by providing us with a partial license plate. This important tip led to arrests that were made in June of 2012.
As a result of those arrests, a lot of property, from jewelry to silverware, was recovered from the suspects.
We want to make sure that that property, which has both monetary and sentimental value, is returned to the victims of those crimes.
All three defendants accepted a deal in court. Ann Carter got two years in state prison. Matthew Ristic got four.
Alex Davis was out on bail. He took a deal for eight years and was supposed to turn himself in on January 22nd. That did not happen.
Police say the community can help protect their elderly neighbors from criminals like these.
Do what they can to educate them about this to make sure that they ask for and demand identification when people come and represent that they're affiliated with government agencies or even with private contracting companies.
I'm Cindy San Luis for LA This Week.
If you think your property may be among those recovered, you can view photos of the items by going to lapdonline.org/valley underscore bureau. There you can do a search of keywords like the suspects' names, and that will take you to information on the case and a link of the photos of the recovered items. Turning the tables on the LEDWP, how you can sell the utility power in the Port of Los Angeles, the subject of a children's book, also giving your input on the city's next budget plan. These stories and more in City Beat. The LA Department of Water and Power is allowing you to turn the tables on them. Instead of purchasing power from the LEDWP, you can now sell solar power to the LEDWP. The LEDWP and the Board of Water and Power Commissioners have approved a program in which customers, solar companies, and other third parties would be allowed to develop solar or other eligible renewable energy projects within LEDWP's service territory and to sell that power to LEDWP at a set price for distribution on the city's power grid. For more information about the Solar Fit Program, which stands for Feed-In Tariff, go to ladwp.com/fit. Over the next few weeks, the Los Angeles Homeless Services Authority, or LASSA, which oversaw the recent LA County Homeless Count, will begin compiling the raw data gathered by all the participating cities to create a plan that will help reduce the region's homeless population and provide a better safety net for those who remain on the streets. Several cities throughout the county participated in the count, including the Sunland-Tahunga Community in Councilman Richard Alarcon's district. LASSA will be releasing an executive summary and full report of the 2013 Greater Los Angeles Homeless Count later this year, likely around June. If you didn't have a chance to attend the recent Community Budget Day at City Hall, you can still weigh in on the city's budget for fiscal year 2013-2014 by going online. The Los Angeles Budget Challenge was released on February 1st and distributed to all 95 neighborhood councils around the city. But Mayor Antonio Viegas also wants your input. All you have to do is go to la.budgetchallenge.org by March 4th. The mayor has said this is a chance to help make the city work for you to create a spending plan that truly reflects the needs of our city. You're never too young to learn about the environment. The Port of Los Angeles is the focus of a new children's book titled "A Cleaner Port: A Brighter Future: The Greening of the Port of Los Angeles." The book, written by Robin C. Friend and Judith Love Cohen, is the sixth in a series of environmental children's books. The authors explain how the Port of Los Angeles is using cleaner, greener ways to move cargo. In this week's list of things to do, a beginner's hike at Griffith Park ushering in Chinese New Year, the Year of the Snake, and a discussion that delves into what can be learned from President Obama's 2012 reelection. If you missed the last Griffith Park hike led by Ranger Ernie Abara, there is another one coming up on Saturday, February 16th. This one is a three-mile beginner hike to Trails Cafe. Meet at the Griffith Observatory parking lot next to the restrooms at 8:00 AM. The observatory is located at 2800 East Observatory Avenue. Be sure to bring cash if you want to buy a snack. You'll find more details by going to facebook.com/rangerernie. Bye-bye, Year of the Dragon. The Year of the Snake is moving in as the lunar calendar ushers in a new year. And on Saturday and Sunday, February 16th and 17th, LA's Chinatown will be throwing a big party, complete with its annual Golden Dragon Parade, arts and crafts for kids, and much more. Saturday's festivities will run from noon to 8:00 PM and Sundays from noon to 5:00 PM. It all takes place at the Central and West Plazas, located at 943 to 951 North Broadway in Chinatown. More info can be found by going to facebook.com/LosAngelesChinatown. The California African American Museum's History Council is set to host its third installment of conversations at CAM's three-part series entitled "Beyond 2012: Be the Change." The discussion will take place Saturday, February 16th, from 1:00 to 2:30 PM. Beyond 2012: Be the Change will detail lessons learned from the 2012 presidential election, the role of African-American citizens, and strategies for the future as the historic reelection of President Obama is analyzed. The California African American Museum is located at 600 State Drive at Exposition Park. You can find out more by going to caamuseum.org. And that's a look at some upcoming things to do. High school kids pit their robots against each other in a friendly test of wills and ingenuity. Gil Reyes reports from the Battle of the Bots.
Oh, almost scored that goal this piece.
The goal for these student-made robots, to scoop up as many bean bags as possible before placing those bags onto the truck. And it's all done by remote control.
It's very satisfying when you score a goal, and you just feel happy that you participated.
They got the goal in there, now they gotta keep it there.
No points awarded if bean bags fall. Those are the rules at the Vex Robotics Sack Attack Tournament.
This is the very first event, in fact, to be hosted at Pierce College. And I'm really glad that the Pierce Robotics Club had the opportunity to do it this year.
Middle and high school students built the robots from scratch. They were put to the test after weeks, sometimes months, of tinkering.
It's a lot of fun, and you get to learn how to be creative and work with other people towards a common goal.
Parents also took part.
We participated in all the meetings. We did all the fundraising for their parts for the robot. We carpool together, so the whole team and the parents worked together to support the kids.
It's very important for children to understand that their parents are there for them, irregardless of whether they are successful or whether they are not successful. As long as they try, as long as they put forth their best effort, then they can all be winners.
They might even be future scientists, engineers, and inventors if that's their true passion. While getting down to the nuts and bolts, these students may have discovered something about themselves. What makes them tick? In Woodland Hills, Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
Congratulations go out to Reseda High School, which received the most awards. That's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you could catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
You're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel.
Would you like a mustache for that?
Sergeants, please call the members. Sergeants, please call the members. Have them report to the council chambers. I do want to thank Mr. Buscagino, Mr. Englander, Mr. Lavagna, Mr. Zine, and I also saw Mr. Parks for being here on time. So call the other members, and sergeants let me know when they are scheduled to arrive. We want to welcome Mr. Weeza. Mr. Reyes. And Mr. Alarcon.
It's Wednesday, February 13th. I'd like to welcome all of you to your Los Angeles City Council. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 AM. The public is welcome. You can come to just watch the council work, or if you have something you want to say, there are public comment cards in the back. So we do have a quorum, I believe. Mr. Clerk, if you could please call the roll.
Alarcon, Buscagino, Englander, Garcetti, Weeza, Carrasco, Correa, Lavagna, Parks, Perry, Reyes, President Alzine, Weston, 10 members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Weeza moves, Reyes seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Buscagino moves, Mr. Zine seconds.
Mr. President, before getting into today's agenda, there are requests to continue Item 1 to February 20th and receive and file Item 5A inasmuch as the taxpayer is compliant with its agreement.
Okay, so without objection.
Furthermore, Mr. President, committee reports for 7, 8, and 9 have been distributed and are now and are before council for their consideration.
Okay. Why don't we go through the agenda?
Very good, sir. Items 2 through 6 are items noticed for public hearing.
Specials, do we have cards?
We have cards on 3 and 5, sir. 3 and 5.
Members, specials? Seeing none, let's prepare to vote. Madam Clerk, let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Next section of the agenda?
Items 7 through 9 are items for which public hearings have been held.
Cards, special, I mean specials, members? Okay, let's prepare to vote on these two items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Next.
Mr. President, items 10 through 23 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, without objection, those items are now before us. Do we have cards, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, sir, we do. We have cards on items 17, 18, 19, 20, 22, and 23.
Specials, members? Specials? Okay, let's prepare to vote on the remaining item. Well, yes. Hold on one second, all right. Okay, let's prepare to vote on those items. Let's, Mr. Carricks?
I'd just like to be listed on the board so my vote is recorded.
Oh, no, we decided not to list you on the board today, Mr. Carricks. But you're a pretty nice fellow. We'll, let's vote on consideration of putting Mr. Carricks on the board. Now, let's prepare to vote. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay. Where are we now, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, items 24 through 28 are items scheduled for closed session. Would you like to hold? you like to hold them on the desk?
We will hold those items until Mr. Krikorian arrives and then we will find out what he recommends we do with these items.
Very good, sir. Mr. President, that takes council to presentations or items called special.
Before we begin today's council meeting, I'd like to ask for quiet and for everyone in the council chambers to rise for a moment of silence for the men and women that have been killed. I understand that one of the deputies is being buried today. We lost another deputy yesterday. So again, I will ask for a moment of silence and all of you that, all of us that pray, let's pray that this reign of terror is over. Please be seated. All right, a couple of quick housekeeping items, let's vote for reconsideration on Item 9. So at this time, Madam Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, we will hold that item and discuss it. It should be the first order of business. Mr. Krikorian, we have several items scheduled for closed session. Do you want me to give you a moment and then just pop up and recommend what we do? Life goes on and it's important that we celebrate the good things in life. And I know we've got a council member from the 15th District that's very excited about some champions that he'd like to present before this body. So at this time, I'd like to turn the floor over to Councilmember Joe Buscaeno.
Thank you, Mr. President. And indeed, we are among, among us, you have a number of champions. In fact, I'm going to ask the entire team to come together as a team, there's a family here, to come join me. All you guys, all just come up and join me right here, yes. Let's give our Narbon Gaucho champions a round of applause and a great welcome to LA City Council Chambers. It is our pleasure to welcome our Narbon football champions, back-to-back champions. Colleagues, for the second year in a row, the Narbon Gauchos have captured the Los Angeles City Section Division 1 football crown. The Gaucho started off the 2012 football season with a punishing non-league schedule that included South Bay powerhouses such as Palos Verdes, Long Beach Poly, Lakewood, Gardena, Sarah High, and Modern Day. After cruising to a 5-0 non-league record, the Gauchos were fully prepared for a tough Marine League battle. The team fought their way to the top of Marine League with tough victories over Carson, Banning, San Pedro, George Washington Prep, and Gardena. After placing first in the Marine League, these Gauchos before you were awarded the number-one seed in the City Section Division 1 playoffs. Narbon easily defeated Locke in the first round of the playoffs, Garfield in the second round, Carson in the third round, and shut out Crenshaw in the finals to cap an amazing 14-0 season. Again, 14-0 undefeated season. Because of their success and dedication, these Gauchos were selected to participate in the state's first regional Open Division Bowl against Concorde de La Salle. And it was here where the De La Salle Monarchs ended the Gaucho's almost-perfect season. But it was these Gauchos, these students, are not only dedicated to being good citizens on the field, but being role models off the field for our Harbor City community. The Gauchos at that game against La Salle had a great game, represented the City Section with integrity and honor. And colleagues, I'd like to share with you quickly how amazing the Gaucho's athleticism and scoring abilities were in this last football season. The Gaucho scored a total of 622 points while their stifling defense held their opponents to only 143 points throughout the entire season. And I'd like to welcome Head Coach Manuel Douglas to say a few words. Coach Douglas, come say a few words on behalf of the entire team. Let's give our championship coach a warm welcome.
Thank you very much, we're very honored to be here. We're very fortunate, this is our third trip here in the last five years, and it's always exciting and it's always an honor. So thank you very much for bringing us down here and recognizing these fine student athletes. It was an outstanding season. Our principal, I apologize for our principal, he could not make it, he had several meetings today, but he was very honored that you guys had invited us. So thank you very much, and, you know, we plan on being back next year.
Yes, thank you, Coach.
Hey, Coach, Mr. Buscaeno, I want to ask Coach, Coach, a question. To me, the most important position is not quarterback, it's cornerback. So if your, if your DBs could raise their hands. Let's give the defensive backs a round of applause.
Mr. President, I'd like also, I spoke to Dr. Vladovic this morning, the school board member representing the areas, just, he too offers his congratulations, and he's so proud of our student athletes here at Narbon. I also want to highlight a number of players who signed on to play at the collegiate level. Troy Williams, Washington, Keyshawn Biara, Washington, A.J. Richardson, Boise State, Paulo Lapua, Washington State, Alanta Toussaint, San Diego State, Greg Clark, New Mexico State, Victor Valentine, Evangel Christian. So we want to congratulate those students and athletes who signed on to these major universities. Let's give them a round of applause.
All right. Congratulations, young men. At this point, Mr. Buscaeno, I'd like to acknowledge Bill Rosendorf.
You know, I, first of all, I got to tell you, to see the energy coming from the future in our face right now is an extremely positive experience for us on the City Council. Number one, thank you for your energy and your engagement. Number two, the interaction you're having with the other young folks right around you. Look at them, these will be your friends, many of them will be your friends for the rest of your life. Number three, realize that by the interconnecting with each other, it strengthens you, it makes you stronger, it actually makes you more able to make it in this crazy world that we live in. And the most recent 72, 86, 96 hours where the whole nation was focused on our officers and crime and the issue of life and death, realize that we're all in this together. And I got to tell you, Joe Buscany, I had two half-dozen eggs today. First time since my cancer dropped me down almost to death that I was able to go out there. The first one went to our council president. He is the best council president I've experienced in my eight years in this city council. And the next half dozen goes to you, Joe, and I'm going to walk over there right now and give it to you.
I love you, thank you so much.
Yeah, see, Mr. Buscaeno, you took my other half dozen eggs, but I'll let you slide on this one. Mr. Tom Labancho.
To the great coach of Narbon. It's good to see you again. And to the players, it's so special that you worked so hard starting back in the summer, starting back in the summer, starting a year ago, you worked so hard. Congratulations to all the coaches and everybody. And I know, Mr. President, you did single out the quarterbacks, but it doesn't start without the center, where's the center right there? Get up here, Joe, get up there, Joe. All right, Joe, there you go, Joe, all right, give him that ball, take a snap, all right. Let's hear it for the Gauchos.
So, Mr. President, on behalf of the City of Los Angeles, it's been told that this team before you is a legendary team, and it's, we all agree that it's probably the best team the City of Los Angeles has ever seen in its recent success, three championships in the last five years. Congratulations. And Gabby Medina, my field deputy from Harbor City, has this amazing plaque we'd like to award to Narbon High School, Champions, City of Los Angeles, City Section Football High School Championships. Give them a round of applause, there it is, hold this up, boys, this is yours, hold it up, all right. All right.
Okay, again, guys, congratulations and good luck in the future. And Coach, see you next year. Okay, Mr. Weeza, are you ready as these, let's give the ballplayers a little time to depart. I don't want you to get tackled. Mr. Weeza, I don't want you to get tackled making your way to the podium, so we'll allow these young champions an opportunity to exit.
They were great, though.
They were great, yeah.
Oh, thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Weeza, the floor is yours.
Thank you. And friends and colleagues, I'm asking you to join me today in congratulating the Downtown News on its 40th anniversary this year. And this newspaper came to be in 1972 when Sue Laris had the idea of starting her own community newspaper. And I think that through the years, that focus, that downtown Los Angeles is certainly a community, is what has sustained them throughout the last 40 years. Here we are, and this community newspaper has become downtown Los Angeles' best source of news, business, politics, art, and culture. The Downtown News has been both a fair and impartial voice of downtown's growth, as well as an advocate of the positive changes that have enhanced our wonderful city. Having won dozens of journalism and industry awards, the Downtown News has earned its spot among one of Southern California's most respected periodicals. It's important to note that a quality paper like the Downtown News doesn't just print itself, rather, it's the product of a passionate group of people who believe in downtown and believe in good journalism. It's the hard work of editor and publisher Sue Laris, executive editor John Rigardi, general manager Don Easton, who's here as well, and their excellent reporters and staff who work each and every day to bring high-quality journalism to Angelino's. Whether Downtown News is covering new development like the Grand Wilshire Hotel, writing stories about bringing back Broadway, or writing about the challenges in dealing with homelessness, or providing readers with an update on the latest cultural offering here in downtown, they are providing invaluable coverage of the ongoing changes to the downtown area and what it's experiencing. And what's amazing to me is lately, those changes have been rapid, and yet, the Downtown News, with a very small staff, is able to provide often the only substantial coverage of very important news affecting downtown Los Angeles. Sometimes, they're even quicker than our larger newspaper in town called the LA Times, but it amazes me that with their small staff, they're able to cover so much and so quickly. And besides offering straight-up news coverage, the Downtown News is known as of late for its biting, often hilarious, political satire writings of John Rigardi. And as this morning, he told me, he has a lot of material that he's going to use soon. But in all fairness, I don't think there is a single council member here that John has not zinged. But if you know John, his aim and heart are true, and a little healthy criticism comes with the territory in a democratic society and with what journalism is all about. There is no doubt that the Downtown News has been a great partner in downtown's revitalization, and I wish them, at the very least, another 40 years of success. And I know that Councilwoman Perry would certainly like to share a few words, as she has worked closely with the Downtown News and a lot of the transformation that has occurred in downtown Los Angeles. So before I turn it over to the Downtown News, Mr. President, I'd like to ask Councilwoman Perry to share a few words as well.
Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And I've been working as a public servant since the early 1990s and had the privilege of serving in the 9th Council District that included downtown for many years. And so I'm intimately involved with the unprecedented growth, the growth of communities. In the good times and the bad, there's been one voice that has always continued to share the news of the day, the pulse of the changing communities, and offered that focus on our city center, and that's been the Downtown News. For over 40 years, they have covered it all, from business to politics to arts to culture, and they have done an incredible job doing it with class and integrity, and in a manner that has earned them the respect of not just the downtown community, but all of Los Angeles. This newspaper has been a part of our resurgence and our recovery and our revitalization. They provide a news source for the influx of new residents to better discover downtown's hidden gems, and you've improved the experience for everyone. The Downtown News has been a very key factor in advocating for positive changes that have lifted the level of debate and discourse among all stakeholders. And I want to commend you for your commitment to covering some critical issues from a growing and truly unique community. And in this day of newspapers changing, downsizing, and meeting the challenges of a digital world, the Downtown News continues to remain relevant and strong. So to Sue, and to Don, and to John, and whenever I see John, I just start smiling. Thank you for keeping the faith, the coverage, and the news fresh and provocative, and congratulations.
Mr. Reyes.
I just want to take a moment and say thank you to Downtown News. I've always appreciated your straightforwardness and how you've assessed our quality of life. And your headquarters there, as you saw the transformation from old structures to vacant buildings to now a beautiful park. And all the insight you would give me, and just understanding how you saw this notion of progress, this notion of politics, what you've done in such a way where one can honestly learn what's real and what isn't. And that, to me, is very precious. But more important is because you come from these neighborhoods. There was a time when I'm going down York and I see John on the sidewalk with his children, and they're waving and they're engaging the community, and they're part of the soul of the city. And so I appreciate the fact that, you know, sometimes the other forms of media get lost in chasing the dollar and what's going to make headlines, what's going to, or how do you define the gore when the plane crashes? Every once in a while, we hear, and I cherish this from you, Downtown News, the experiences that speak to every person's life, whether it's a person who is struggling in those one-bedroom apartments with three families. one-bedroom apartments with three families, or the corporate head who is making these decisions and impacting a quality of life, the whole range you cover. And I think that's what makes this, uh, city so beautiful, and you describe it so eloquently, and I thank you for that. For all my years I've been working here, uh, as a civil servant, thank you so much.
Mr. Labange.
Thank you very much, and, uh, to Sue, to Don, to John, Jose, Ms. Perry at the previous time, there's nothing like a local newspaper that gives local news. And over 40 years ago, the, the whole bunker hill was still much undeveloped, and the driving force of community information has been The Downtown News. The impact you did on the development of the Staples Center, of the development of LA Live, all the big events from the Los Angeles Olympic Games, the great games of '84, to throughout the convention, the Democratic Convention of 2000, and on and on, the horror of the library fire and the work in capturing that, all of that. But I just wanna ask you, Mr. President, one thing. Would you order Gary Leonard over there, 'cause he's as much as a Downtown News as I? Give me your camera, Gary. I'm gonna shoot. You get in there. No, no. Would you, Mr. President, order Gary Leonard to the podium? That's all.
I'm just gonna let him stay freelance, Mr. Labange. He's real comfortable.
Give him a round of applause.
Mr. President.
And, Mr. Weezer, uh, I too wanna say congratulations on, and, on 40 years, and I hope that it's 40 more. And I have been zinged by John, so I, I know a good zinging when I see one. But anyway, continued, uh, uh, success to all of you. And, uh, with that, Mr. Weezer, I, uh, kick it back to you.
Thank you, Mr. President, and, uh, I enjoyed reading that story that John wrote about you, Mr. President. Um, and, Mr. President, when Tom Labange was, uh, chairing the council meeting last week, I had to remind him that the council president cannot just order things around city, the city. If he wanted to order things, he had the little 10 minutes on the chair, and he was ordering things, and today he ordered our good friend Gary Leonard, come stand over here, so. But, but with that, let me, uh, congratulate The Downtown News a little, and before I ask, uh, Sue to come up here and say a few words. You know, The Downtown News has been that thread that has binded the downtown community for many, many years. It's been, uh, the way people communicate with one another. As you talk to stakeholders in downtown, they all say, "Did you see that in The Downtown News?", or "Let me pick up The Downtown News to find out, uh, and know what's going on in downtown." But beyond that, I mentioned a little bit about their journalism and their reporters. You know, they are not only keeping government accountable, but they are also doing a great civic duty by bringing us that information that matters. They have tracked what downtown has been for the last 40 years, and to some extent, by being objective at the same time, been a cheerleader for the many positive changes that have happened. So with that, the City of Los Angeles is honored to present to The Downtown News a resolution congratulating you on your 40, 40 years, and thanking you for the many contributions you've made to not only downtown, but the city as a whole. You've been a driving force in all the positive things that have happened in downtown and the city. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Jose.
Let's give them a round of applause.
Ladies and gentlemen, Sue Laris, the publisher for The Downtown News.
Thank you all so much. I'm very touched by all this, in your words, Councilmember Perry and Reyes, um, and, and Tom Labange, and certainly Jose Weezer, and certainly the council president. I, coming here, Mr. President, I wasn't sure that you'd even speak to us after John's...
I have thick skin.
Well, yeah, it's good, 'cause you're gonna need it. But it's a great city. It did not have a downtown in, in the real sense. It was, it was an opportunity for us to start a newspaper in a place that didn't have one. We started on $1,400 of borrowed MasterCard money. It, it has grown itself, and, um, we're absolutely thrilled to be here. We think it's a privilege to have been able to be a part of the formation of the, one of the great cities of the world, and have had a voice in the formation of one of the great cities of the world, created that community. So I'm very touched by all of this, and thank you all very, very much.
No, thank you. Let's give them a round of applause.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Weezer. Okay, Mr. City, uh, Mr. Clerk, what I wanna do is let's, uh, oh, Mr. Labange for a quick intro.
Introduction. We have some great students from Kiel, uh, Special University of Public Administration. Kiel is in Germany, right on the French-German border. They're dedicated. They also, I wanna ask our city attorney to come forth right here, 'cause you're so special as well, to add to this. This is our opportunity to welcome you. We have a sister city in Berlin, uh, which has that. Mr. Rosendahl has German blood, and I want you to... Howard Glock is one of our city attorneys. Howard is Shepherd's is. Howard, say a few words about the group.
Uh, well, this is, uh, my third time helping them out. They're all students of public administration. There is a judge present, three professors, and 12 students, and, uh, they are all working on degrees in public administration because, like all the members of the city council present here, they are gonna dedicate themselves to public service, uh, which is a very noble thing to do. So I'm happy to bring them here, uh, give them a little of a tour of the criminal justice system and city government. We'll be meeting with the CEO's office later on, um, and also visiting the Criminal Justice Center. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that, that you have come. And, Mr. President, there's nothing like helping the public. That's the public microphone, uh, it's a public meeting, and, uh, so much we can learn from each other. And the one thing I do wanna say, 'cause I know you're so keen, Mr. President, the amazing thing about Germany, uh, and Postwar and beyond, is they kept their manufacturing. Eighty-three million, uh, people live in Germany, and it's the size of, a little bigger than the state of Oregon. How they manage that is key, so we can learn from each other. Let's give them a big hand. Welcoming, Mr. Rosendahl.
Yes. Uh, meine Mutter und meine Vater from Deutschland. Meine Mutter von der Schwarzwald, from Wandorf. My grandfather was the burgemeister in the little town. Mein Vater is from the Rhine Valley, from outside of Cologne. Uh, they met on 86th Street in New York. My father was against this Hitler business coming. My mother was a simple peasant girl and wanted to come to America where the streets are paved with gold. They met on 86th Street in New York, in the Catholic church, in the choir. They had eight children, and the third of the youngest, so it's a pleasure to meet Lanzmann, uh, uh, from Deutschland. God bless you.
All right. Again, welcome, welcome.
Dankeschön.
Okay, uh, Bill. Bill Rosendahl, bilingual. All righty. Uh, Mi- Mr. Clerk? Um, Mr. Keretz? I'm sorry, I didn't see your...
Well, I just wanted to say to, to the students, although I don't know if they're hearing me or not, um, I'm also from Germany. I've forgotten all my German, so I can't say what Mr. Rosendahl said. Um, I will say, my father was, my grandfather was president of one of the German soccer leagues, I think the Northern German Soccer League, 100 years ago. Um, so, uh, I've never been to Germany, but, uh, and, and my father actually was one of the youngest soccer referees ever as well in Germany. So, uh, we all have some, some connection, and we welcome you here, and we hope to continue the connection to public service, that you'll stick with us and, and hopefully, uh, learn something here to help you move on in that direction. So thank you for being here.
Okay, again, thank you, Mr. Keretz, and I just did not see your name. Oh, God, Mr. Krikorian. No.
Uh, moving on, Mr. President, I, I just wanted to say that, uh, on items number 24, 26, 27, 28, uh, we can go ahead and approve those settlement recommendations in open session, uh, unless members have questions. It was the recommendation of the Budget and Finance Committee to approve settlement in those matters. Uh, as to item number 25, there is a settlement recommendation, uh, but it's probably appropriate to discuss it in closed session, just so members have the benefit of, uh, hearing the status of that matter.
Okay. So, Mr. Clerk, we're gonna vote on, uh, we're gonna hold 25, is it, Mr. Krikorian?
Yes.
And we're gonna vote on the rest of those items. So if you could read them?
Very good, uh, Mr. President. For item 24, in the case entitled Nick Ross et al. versus City of Los Angeles, there's a recommendation to expend $295,000 in settlement. For item 26, in the case entitled Jung Mo Kim versus City of Los Angeles, there's a recommendation to expend $247,000 in settlement. Item 27, in the case entitled 3118 LLC versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend $423 in settlement, and, excuse me, $423,000 in settlement. And it, for item 29, in the case entitled Sharon Coleman versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend $150,000 in settlement.
Okay, now, hold your point, Mr. Zein. What we wanna do while we still have 12 members, if we could vote... Oh, let's, on this item, open the roll. Wait, wait, Mr. Zein, you wanna speak on this item?
Is number 24 part of this? I had some questions on it. Can you hold 24, please?
Okay, we'll hold 24 as well.
I had some questions on 24.
We'll vote on the remaining. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, now let's vote on the ordinances except for number three. So we, if we could vote on all of the other ordinances, so first vote is for reconsideration. Let's vote for reconsideration.
And, Mr. President, that's on items 2, 4, 10, 11, 12, and 13.
Okay, let's vote for reconsideration. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, now let's vote on the items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
All right. Okay, now, if I could get the CAO to come to the center table, we will move to item nine. Go right ahead, uh, Mr. Krikorian.
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. President. Um, I'm pleased, uh, to ask Mr. Santana to come before us to, uh, present his report entitled City at a Crossroads. Um, and this was a report that we heard in the Budget and Finance Committee, which I think, uh, sets forth, um, a, an appropriate context for us to begin our consideration of where we are in terms of our budget and how we, uh, begin to address the challenges that we still face. One of the things that I think you will see as we discuss this report is that the city has made tremendous progress over the last four years in addressing the budget challenges that we faced, the unprecedented budget challenges that we faced since the collapse of the global economy in 2008. Uh, next year, uh, the next fiscal year, uh, was projected to, uh, have a deficit of over $1 billion just four years ago. That number has been whittled down now considerably to, in the neighborhood of $200 billion, uh, $200 million. And that's been as a result of cuts, it's been a result of reductions in services to our constituents, it's been a result of contributions that our partners in labor have made, sacrifices that they've been made. It's been due in part to improvements in the economy, a variety of factors. Uh, but it's unquestionably true that we have made considerable progress in, uh, trying to, to address that very, very significant challenge that we faced. But it's equally true that the challenge is not completely met, and there still is a very significant budget deficit that we're facing, a structural component of this budget deficit that we face both for the coming fiscal year, uh, and for at least, uh, the fiscal year after that, and perhaps more. So, um, Mr. Santana is going to lay that out, I think, in a, in a way that will be, um, that will be very clear, uh, but I think it's an appropriate way for us to start the budget season, and, uh, and I hope that members will be mindful of the facts that Mr. Santana's gonna be laying out as we enter, uh, the budget season. So, Mr. Santana?
Thank you, uh, Miguel Santana, CEO. Um, that is correct in terms of what has just been presented. The city has made significant progress over the last four years in addressing a, a major structural challenge. Today, the deficit is projected to be approximately 216, if we go to the next slide, that, um, that, uh, represents a significant reduction of over $1 billion from four years ago. It's important to point out, as we look at the 216, that of course, that represents a moment in time of when we can identify the deficit. The deficit is identified each year, eh, when the mayor releases his budget on April 20th. That number will change again, uh, on April 20th, when that budget is released. And we know, coming into the season, that in fact, things are improving. Uh, we know we're paying about $45 million less in our pension costs, much as a result of the very difficult decisions that all of you have made, um, and the, and the contributions that the men and women who work for the City of Los Angeles are making towards retiree healthcare. Um, and then we're also hoping to begin the fiscal year with, hopefully, about $80 million of a budget stabilization fund. And the reason you're able to do that is because, in fact, you've hit the 5% reserve fund that has been a city policy for some time now. And so with those two pieces, uh, it is a good place to begin the budget, uh, reducing the projected deficit as we see today. At the same time, we also know our expenditures are also growing. In the police department, fire departments alone, they've asked for over $144 million of new spending for next fiscal year. Uh, some of it already captured in the deficit, but frankly, most of it not. And so, uh, the deficit is, uh, fluctuates, and so it is finally identified at the, uh, when the mayor releases his budget. So, the first chart shows the various pieces of how you were able to reduce that. And it's important to remind us of what that was like four years ago, uh, under the leadership of, at that point, President Garcetti, Mr. Parks, who chaired Budget and Finance, and the leadership of your, of your council, uh, Ms. Perry, Mr. Smith, and of course, Mr. Zein. Uh, the city was able to, uh, make some, some significant efforts to reduce a deficit from four years ago that was, uh, that started off being, uh, 320, and ended up close to $500 million in one year alone. And that challenged the city to not just deal with the deficit on a short-term basis, but engage in a long-term strategy to finally bring us to fiscal health. And so there's various pieces to that puzzle. Uh, the most significant piece is, of course, pension savings. Uh, $263 million with the pension savings that, um, had been generated due to our employees contributing towards retiree healthcare, due to changes done at both pension systems, and as well as through the pension reform that's been adopted, uh, on the sworn side, and that will become effective on the civilian side effective July 1st. And so originally, we had projected a pension cost of over $1 billion, uh, just a few years ago. It's, it's now down to 999. It's important to point out that our pension costs continue to grow, but they're not growing at the same rate as was originally projected four years ago. In addition to that, we've seen cuts throughout departments. Those cuts are significant when you think about the kind of service levels that we're expected to provide. As a whole, the city is 15% smaller than it was four years ago, uh, with over 5,000 positions eliminated throughout the city. Now, as we proceed forward with a budget shortfall of 216, and as I said, uh, dropping, we know that how we do so is becoming more and more difficult. One way of looking, if you look at the next slide, is that, um, of the entire budget of 7.2 billion that you oversee, half of it is restricted. Half of it are revenue streams that have a specific purpose, uh, that can't be used to pay for police officers or firefighters. Um, and so those funds are, are intended for a specific, uh, uh, service. The other half, about, almost the other half, 47%, pay for police, fire, library, recreation and parks, public works, transportation, building safety, planning, and the convention center. So only about 5% of the discretionary dollars that you have oversight covers animal services, city attorney, controller, my office, cultural affairs, emergency management, the mayor, your offices, the city clerk disability, zoo, and a handful of others. That's 5%. The total amount of that is about $359 million. The context of the sales tax discussion is really about how do you solve a 200-plus-million-dollar deficit, which is projected to grow, uh, even greater than that the following years, when the only room you have left to protect public safety and other core services is about 5% of the discretionary funding? And so that's, that's the question that's before the voters of Los Angeles and a, and a challenge that the chair of Budget and that the chair of Budget and Finance and the rest of the committee have to engage in on an annual basis. So people say, well, there's certainly, there has to be more places to cut. And so let's go through some of the departments that have in fact experienced significant reductions. In 2006, '07, the zoo used to receive a subsidy of over $10.6 million, beyond this general fund covering the related costs. That subsidy is now down to 1.3 million. Animal Services staffing levels have been reduced by over 21% since 2009, '10, from 412 employees now down to 326. And the important thing to point out is that the demand for services has not changed. One way the department has been able to still deliver services at the same and frankly, at an enhanced level is through the partnership that they've entered into with Best Friends, a nonprofit organization who's running the shelter out in the San Fernando Valley that was closed for many years when it opened. And so that has allowed the department to build capacity in its shelter program, improve on adoptions, and thus reduce the overall number of animals in care. G S D, support departments that all, from public safety to virtually all departments rely on, has experienced major reductions, both in terms of their funding levels as well as their staffing. G S D had a budget in 2008, '09 of 225 million, now it's down to 158. How that's reflected in staffing, they've gone from 1,916 employees down to 1,262. I T A, another department that's been heavily hit due to the last four years, $106 million of a budget in 2008, '09, is now down to $81 million. Their staffing levels went from 807 down to 479 individuals. So it's through those cuts that we've been able to address a significant portion of our deficit. But the truth is, is that that has provided a significant impact on the city's ability to meet basic services. Another section is, of course, revenue. And revenue is part of the puzzle that has allowed us to reduce the structural deficit, about 177 million of the overall solutions. And one of the areas has been that the economy has in fact been improving. We've been seeing revenue grow about 2.5% every year for the last few years. In addition to that, when the state dissolved the C R A, your council and the mayor had made it, made a decision to shift the majority of those funds back into the general fund. When the C R A was dissolved, it created an opportunity for cities to receive additional funding. And so, and we've also been much more aggressive in going after collections throughout the city and improving in those areas. So that has allowed our revenue to grow. And finally, the other section, of course, is related to other savings that we've had, that workers have had to pay more in relation to healthcare and other areas. Now, I stated that in the, while all of this has been going on, the reduction of our, of our overall deficit, you have also maintained a commitment to a 5% reserve fund. Your reserve fund today is, exceeds 5%, and in fact, is at 5.37%. We've always stated that that is a floor, it should not be considered as the ceiling, and it should be our goal to continue to maintain a healthy reserve fund for a number of reasons. But one of the things that surprises many people when they see the success that the city has engaged in is that in fact, our savings account continues to grow. And beyond that, you've also made a commitment to build a budget stabilization fund that, again, while one-time money allows us to be better protected for the insurgency that takes place throughout the year.
Miguel, could you hold your point, Mr. Krikorian?
Thank you. Mr. President, I'm sorry to interrupt the presentation, Mr. Santana, but I did just want to focus for a moment on that point about the state of the reserve fund, because I think it's a pretty important point for members to actually hear, that we are now at the highest level of the reserve fund that we have been in how many years?
In over a decade.
In over a decade, at the time of the greatest challenges that we've had since the Great Depression, and we've been able to finally meet our financial, the obligation under our financial policies, exceed it, and in fact, reach the highest reserve level in 10 years.
Right.
Thank you. Sorry for the interruption.
No, no, absolutely. I think that's an important point to make, and it's something that we need when we go out to the market to borrow money. Investors want to make sure that we have the adequate reserves to pay our obligations. Now, it's, as I stated from the onset, the deficit is reflected of two things, obviously the growth in revenue and the growth in expenditures. And what creates the structural deficit is that in fact, expenditures are growing at a faster rate than the revenues are. In public safety, it's important to point out, which makes up over 70% of your discretionary spending, those costs continue to grow. What both the fire and police systems have submitted in their budget proposals through their various commissions is over $144 million of additional spending beyond the current level. So just to maintain services at the level that we have today, not to improve them, but to simply to maintain them, the city will need to find an additional $144 million for police and fire, 53 million for salaries on the sworn side, an additional four for the civilian, 36 million for increases in expenditures, 2 million for facilities, and 48 million for vehicles and equipment. You know, the police department, every year, makes a request to purchase police cars, and last year, we had a debate as to whether to borrow the money or to actually pay it cash. The best policy is to pay it cash because the life of a vehicle is so limited. And so we need to get back to that as a process. So the, in order to maintain public safety, there is going to be additional costs as part of the process. The other area is, of course, in our infrastructure and our roads and streets. And one of the things that we're seeing, that the city has been able to maintain its commitment to the street program, but the funding sources that support it are starting to decline, particularly funding from the state and from the federal government, as well as local taxes that we receive. The general fund subsidy over the last few years has been dramatically reduced, is now down to practically nothing. And so in order to maintain the level of support that we currently have in our street program, the city's going to have to find additional funding, let alone to try to improve the quality of our streets. So I think if we go on to slide number 13, Ben, when we look at the overall expenditures that we're seeing for the next few, few years, obviously, our expenditures with our own workforce is a major part of that. And what, 80% of our revenue goes to our own employees in, in terms of salaries, which is 59%, 19% of, of overall pensions. And then, and then there's other areas in terms of healthcare and workers' comp. Only about 9% include debt service and our deferred, currently deferred, infrastructure fund. So over 90% of the general fund actually goes to our labor costs. And so in order to ensure the, the long-term financial sustainability of the city, it's not just important to identify new revenue sources, but it's also important to maintain a control over these costs in the future. Our challenge around pensions, I think, we've talked about, we, through your leadership, you've been able to control and actually start reducing the speed in which those costs are growing. Our salaries are tied to compensation and contracts that have already been approved by your council and the mayor. Our healthcare costs grow around 8% to 10% each year, so finding ways to share in that cost with our employees is an important part of this process. And so how you proceed in the future in relation to 90% of, of your cost is going to be a critical component to the overall longevity of the city. So we'll end with the final chart that goes back to the projected deficits that we've, that you've all seen, you know, several times over the last year. Again, a significant improvement from what we had originally projected four years ago, but nevertheless, still a deficit. Should the sales tax measure in fact pass, we'll see the deficit as projected today to be cut in half for next year, and then make a significant dent for the following subsequent years. With this increased revenue, while maintaining discipline on spending, as well as the natural growth in revenue as the economy improves, we could actually see the light at the end of the tunnel and, and be able to reach a point of not only eliminating the deficit altogether, but as important, start developing a revenue source to fund our infrastructure that hasn't been dealt with effectively, to start preparing us for the looming liabilities that exist, both in terms of legal challenges that we're currently facing, as well as the insurgency at the federal government. We all know that federal sequestration is around the corner. It could be as high of a $115 million hit to the city should those cuts proceed. And as well as being able to restore services to the levels that I think most Angelinos expect. So with that, I'd like to thank you and respond to any questions that you have.
Mr. Parks? You're good?
Yeah.
Mr. Krikorian to close, or Mr. LaBanche?
This is a very good report. Could you just, because it helps on things, if you went back from, let's say, 50 years, and just kind of had a skim on, on how this has changed? And also, I know in 1978, there was a redirection of the property taxes, how this has changed our revenue. I think it would be helpful on that, whether it's sales tax or, as it's changed over the course of the last 40, 50 years, because that has done that. And I think it helps to be able to inform the people we represent, how we are able to manage what we have based on the resource. We don't sell, we sell service, but we give it away. And we, and that's what we have to do. So if you could look at that, if you understand what I'm saying.
Sure. Well, I think you raise a good point in that, you know, the, the context of all of this is that over the last 10 years, the state has found every way to, to take from, from local governments and, or to push down greater responsibilities onto local governments. And so every decade, it seems to carry a different form. The most recent was obviously the dissolution of the C R A. And the property taxes that people pay, most of that money actually doesn't come to the city. The sales tax that people pay, the significant majority doesn't come to the city. One of the few revenue sources that is actually 100% generated for, for the City of Los Angeles, is actually the business tax. And certainly, there's a discussion about whether or not that in fact hurts our ability to attract and keep businesses. So the context in which all of this is taking place is an important thing to point out.
And, and as we look to in the last several years, because of the reduction, community business improvement districts has been formed, which has been something that is a, they tax themselves for services that they would want in their area, which has really transformed some areas, and I'm thinking downtown and Hollywood, whatever. But I think it's good to look at that. And then I'm on LAFCO board, we met this morning, one thing we did talk about, how could you consolidate some cost of government down, but still get the same services to people? Thank you, you and your office and your staff. Thank you very much.
Mr. Rosendorf?
Ted, look, I've been on the council now for eight years, and frankly, I think you're fantastic. And I think the Budget Committee, which I've been on eight years, under both Mr. Parks and, and also under Paul Krikorian, has dealt with these issues every single day. When we did the reduction in staff and we did the, all those kinds of things, and we lost over 5,000 workers and we did all of that, it was to shrink the cost of government. Coming from the private sector, I sense, said from day one, pension and healthcare reform. I came from that world, and I put in a 401K for my workers, so I understand the private sector better than anybody else in this city, because I lived in it all my life, until I joined the government when I was 60. I'm getting fed up with the media misunderstanding or confusing this whole 5% sales tax. We have to do it if we want to be able to maintain police and fire. Would you give us a little more credibility in this understanding, especially when you hear these pandering mayor candidates that don't understand, in my district alone, this is a good deal for my folks who own their lands, own their this? Help me through this so that people can appreciate this 5% sales tax, even though it's regressive, and I'm a progressive, is necessary for us to meet our deadlines without living in hysteria all the time. Help me.
Well, you know, I'm not certainly not going to campaign for the sales tax, but I think, I think the question that's before most voters is, is the status quo acceptable? So what we're projecting, while things are in fact improving, and we outline how that is in, in our report, what the future looks like without the sales tax is the city's limited capacity to deal with its infrastructure, to maintain the level of services that we have today, and most importantly, to protect public safety at the existing levels. You know, the reason we highlight the fact that police and fire, just to keep the level of service that we have today, are asking for an additional $144 million for next year, is to make the point that those costs are in fact growing. We have to buy police cars, we have to maintain our equipment, we have to pay our, the men and women who work for both of those departments. Those are bottom-line infrastructure needs that those departments need. So to do so, the revenue source needs to be there. Now, what you've sacrificed over the last few years to keep that level of service is everything else. And so we showed you how in Animal Services, G S D, I T A, and virtually every single department around the city, including police and fire, have had to shrink down to be able to keep that level of support. The question is, how much longer can we do that? And so that's really what's before the voters of Los Angeles, to make that termination, and then also to be in a better situation to invest in, in the future in our infrastructure.
Yeah, and that is the case. And, and the reality is, my district, we're fortunate. Look, I got the ocean, I love it. You know, it's a place I, I will stay until I leave this world. It's great. But you know, we have a lot of very expensive homes and lovely lands. When you think about if we didn't do this 1/5% sales tax, and the drift of where we're going with those other taxes, could you explain how it hurts my constituents more if they didn't go for this, without being political?
No, I, I think we lay that out in our report, that the, that the challenges now become, what else do we cut?
Right.
So, you know, we know that our revenue streams for our street program are declining. The city's general fund has practically been eliminated altogether. To make up that loss, we're going to have to find a new revenue source, just to keep the streets at the same level. When you've reduced everything else, you know, it's going to be almost impossible to avoid making additional cuts in public safety. And the, the current discussion that you all had as it relates to over 90 positions in the police department on the civilian side demonstrates how little flexibility we have, being able to civilianize our dispatch unit and being able to find the funding for that.
Right.
Being able to remove police officers out of our jails and hire civilians will be limited by whether we have the funding for it.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendorf. Mr. Zine?
Thank you. Item number seven, that was previously approved on consent, $27.8 million in prior encumbrances that are now being turned over to the reserve fund. Can you go into, we're talking about the mid-year and the budget, $27.8 million was sitting there and not being utilized, and it is now going to be utilized for some positive purpose, whether it's going to the reserve fund or going into funding? If you can comment on that. And how many other funds do we have that are sitting dormant where that money can be applied to something for the city's services?
Well, it's important to point out that 18 of that, that dollar amount is actually general fund, the rest of it is specific for, for special funds, while still important.
But 18.2 million dollars, general fund, that's a lot of money.
That's right. And, and I think that's why this exercise was important. Now, this is a process that my office and the comptroller's office do every year. The way we've been able to grow the reserve fund every year is that we basically look at prior encumbrances and we actually start clearing them out and actually move that money into the reserve fund and, and grow it over a period of time. It's happened every year, and that's why we've been able to hit the 5%. So in this particular-- So in this particular case, we normally do it at the end of the fiscal year and able to move that money to the reserve fund. In this particular time, in partnership with SEIU and the Coalition, we were able to do it earlier. What followed it was also a policy. We basically, you know, told all departments that any encumbrances beyond a certain period of time, they would have to now justify it to all of you, if in fact to be spent. You know, clearing out these accounts are part of the process that we go through. And so fortunately, we're able to use those dollars now to help build the reserve fund and this budget stabilization fund to better prepare us for next year.
And then when we talk about the reserve fund, obviously, that helps us with our funding, helps us with our bond rating, et cetera. But when it comes into the, I understand, 500 special funds, have we analyzed to say how many of those funds are not being spent? They're piling up for years and years, and the fees are sitting there, not being utilized for any purpose. They're just collecting, and I don't know if they're collecting the interest or just collecting dust.
Well, that may be true in some funds. I mean, part of the frustration is that those dollars are so restricted that, you know, the limited purpose, there has to be a specific program. We have funding, for example, to help fund, that come from our cable dollars, as Mr. Rosendorf knows, that has a specific purpose related to our cable infrastructure, and that's how we're going to build our new station. But that takes time to identify. Unfortunately, those funds can't be moved for general fund purposes, otherwise it would be part of the overall solution to our deficit.
I mean, funds within that special category, as I understand, there's 500 special funds that the city manages. And how many of those dollars are sitting, not being applied for the different projects that are sitting waiting for funding that people haven't identified? I mean, that's a lot of funds, and there's probably millions of dollars in it. I'm not saying switch them and spend them on something inappropriate, but within those particular categories, since we have multiple services, you would think that we would look into that and say, we have 10 million here and 20 million here and 30 million. Let's move some of those projects forward as quickly as possible to help serve the public. The other question I have is on the business tax. We're talking about reducing business tax. You mentioned business tax is a major source of revenue for the City of Los Angeles. So the movement now is to reduce the business tax. We took away grocery receipts tax from the car dealers, hopefully bring back car dealers. And then the car sales, we make money on that. As we discuss this business tax, which I'm sure the Business Committee would love it, and we take a lot of vacant storefronts and put people in there, we need to counter that with something. We can't just say we're going to phase this down, and then as it phases down, there's nothing to substitute, and then we have a bigger gap than we have now. Can you comment on that?
Well, you basically stated our recommendation. Mr. Miller and I submitted a report basically saying that should there be any reduction to the business tax, there should be an acknowledgement that that revenue is not coming in. We don't believe that it gets replaced dollar for dollar by the other revenue streams. Outside economists have determined that's not the case. But you should treat it as an expenditure or find an alternative funding source. And whether or not the business tax is a good thing or bad thing, I think it certainly doesn't help the perception of Los Angeles as being the most business-friendly community by having the highest. At the same time, we have a responsibility to be responsible on how we reduce that business tax. So we will know more after the March election as to whether or not the city's in a better place to actually reduce that tax.
And just my final comment, on the civilization within Los Angeles Police Department, there are many sworn officers working in civilian capacity. If we would put those civilians back into place, put those officers out into the field or detectives or whatever assignment, we would get a better resource utilization for the public, where you have, and the captains have told me, reports are due, projects are due, we don't have to do it, we'll bring our sworn personnel to do that. So that's something that should be a priority, to put civilians in those positions and put those returned folks back.
Right. And we agree with that. The challenge is having the funding for it. And so the only other option you had is to reduce the size of the sworn workforce, use those savings to hire civilians. And obviously, there's been a commitment to maintain the level of the workforce on the sworn side that we have now. You know, new revenue allows the city then to hire more civilians, particularly in our jails, as you well know, who are currently staffed by vice foreign members who are now not, you know, on the street fighting crime out there.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Krikorian to close.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Thank you, members. Thank you, Mr. Santana, for this report. For at least the last four years, since the fiscal collapse of 2008 and the global financial meltdown, it has been the budget objective of the city to try to get through the year, to try to manage to come up with another balanced budget to get through the year. And I think it's time, the title of Mr. Santana's report is especially appropriate, because it's time for us to really sit down as a council and as a city and decide what kind of city do we want to be? Do we want to continue to live hand to mouth? Do we want to continue to go through budget year after budget year, squeaking by and trying to come up with a patched-together budget to get us through the year? Or do we want to start building a city that restores services, guarantees public safety, invests in infrastructure, creates an environment that's attractive to business? That's the decision that's before us as a council and before the voters of Los Angeles right now. And so I think that as we resolve that question and discuss what kind of city we want to be, we also have to be forthright, and we have to base our decisions on facts and arithmetic. And the report that you have before you is a great start in that discussion. There are those who, you know, would say that we can solve this problem by addressing waste, fraud, and abuse, and that's clearly nonsense. Is it important to continue to try to address waste, fraud, and abuse? You bet it is. We have and we will. There are those who say we can solve this problem by doing pension reform. That's nonsense. It's mathematically untrue to say that. Do we need to do more? Yes, of course. We have, and we need to continue to do more. There are some who would say that if we just attract more business, our problems will be solved. That clearly, as you look at this information before you, is not true. We need to do more of it? Of course. But it's not enough in itself. There are those who would say that we can continue to expand our police department and increase the expense that we incur on our police department without raising any taxes or doing anything else. And the numbers of those sorts of proposals simply don't add up when you look at this report. So, folks, I think it's time that we really, as a council, as a city, be honest with each other and say, what kind of city do we want to live in? What kind of city do we want to leave for our children? And what are we prepared to do to help build that city and invest in it right now? So that's the question, that's the crossroads that we're at, that's presented by this report. And as we move forward through the budget discussions in coming months, I hope that we'll be mindful of this report, mindful of the progress that we've made, but also mindful of the challenges that we have before us and of the goals that we should be setting for ourselves for the longer term. Thank you.
Well said. Okay, no more speakers on the queue. Madam Clerk, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Thank you, Mr. Santana. Let's move to item three, held special by Cards, Arnold Sachs, item three. Okay, he's gone. Let's open the roll on item three. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
17, I believe, is Mr. Arnold Sachs as well. No speakers on the queue. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
18 is called special by Mr. Sachs, and he's the only card that we have. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
19, called special by Mr. Arnold Sachs. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
20, held special by Mr. Arnold Sachs. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Now we'll go to item 22, Mr. Dude and John Walsh. Please come forward.
Presente, yo soy siempre presente. I want someone to translate that into English. You don't have anybody? Okay, thank you. He's now my translator. John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, and for identification purposes only, chairman of anybody but Garcetti who's missing today, and also our brand-new committee, Antonio Vierigosa for Pope. We'll be talking about that on the public comment. That's number 22. We'll be talking about a lot on the public comment. This concerns housing. Now, I want you to understand that the private industry can turn out housing per unit at about two-thirds of what the city does and the federal government does. You're going to turn a Marxist-Leninist into a libertarian. Here we're talking about, for just a handful of units on number 22, they are going to float a $12.6 million bond over 30 years. That will actually cost us $25 to $30 million, and you wonder why you're asking for Prop A, no on Prop A. What we're talking about here is the waste of public housing. You don't know how to build public housing. If you went to the private industry, you could get a much better deal, but then your relatives wouldn't get jobs. I'm telling you, 12 and a half million, incidentally, this is on Wyandotte Street, you don't even tell us how many units in here. I want to know, how many units are we going to get for $25 million over the next 30 years? How many units? Go to HollywoodHighlands.org or go to front page online, Vierigosa for Pope.
Mr. Dude?
Yes. This is a totally archaic way of looking at housing. Mr. Clerk, you have a smudge on your forehead.
Just stick to, that has nothing to do with the item, Mr. Dude.
No, but it has to do with distinguishing yourself from others.
No, it doesn't have anything to do with housing. Stay on the item, Mr. Dude, please.
We distinguish the homeless with the people that have houses, that have homes. It's just another distinction that we make, and I'm saying to you, you are wasting a lot of money on nothing, and people are not getting a proper way to house themselves. This city is one of the most uncomfortable cities to live in the world, because you will be taxed here, you will be taxed there, you will encounter parking restrictions everywhere. There is no peace of mind whenever even you go to a movie or anything, and you're trying to make a beautiful city. You will not make a beautiful city by taxing the citizens today.
Stay on the item.
The item is, you keep taxing everybody.
No, that's not the item.
He is disrupting the meeting by extended discussion of irrelevancies.
You're disrupting the meeting by talking, speaking off topic. Okay, members, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay, I want to call up, now we're going to move to item 23. Mr. Krikorian.
Thank you, Mr. President. Items seven, eight, and nine, forthwith, please.
So ordered. We'll go to 23, John Walsh, followed by Dal House Dude.
HollywoodHighlands.org, or just go to Ron KLA or to Mayor Sam's blog. Again, we have brought this up, I'm going to have to do all this myself. I want, this is a reinstatement of a reward for the death of Julie Souza, an additional six months. How much money do we have out there right now in rewards? How many rewards do actually get paid out? And how much money is sitting there? And that, incidentally, is a debit. Every reward is a debit on our books. You will give us no information. The Times, they're sleeping over there in their office. This is what I'm saying about this reward. You have a reward, incidentally, for Dorner. Not a dime should be paid to anybody. Those people are victims. Nobody turned him in. I want that money back from the city. I want that money back.
Mr. President, he is not talking about this reward motion.
The whole reward gate is a mess. And I'm telling you, I want to know who Julie Souza is, why you are reinstating the award, how long has the reward been up? Why hasn't anybody been found? And why do we have to put it up for six months more? And how many others are being reinstated? And what is the cryotopia for reinstatement? And they sit up there, Rosendorf is sleeping, and they don't give a damn about the blood of Julie Souza. They don't. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Okay.
Well, you can see that he speaks with passion, you know? He obviously knows what's going on most of the time. Nobody knows what's going on all of the time.
Mr. President, he has not spoken about this item yet.
No, not yet. Motion is relative to reinstating the reward. Oh, you remember Bin Laden? For 10 years, they offered a million dollars.
Please stay on the reward, please.
I'm talking about rewards for hunting criminals, right? Aren't you offering a reward to whoever turns in a criminal? I thought that's what we're talking about. A million dollars for Bin Laden, a million dollars for this other guy that went down yesterday. I don't know how much that reward is.
He is still not talking about this item.
Using the money that the people give you for different items, and you do not use it wisely, you know?
Maybe this is, this is the third warning. Mr. President.
Thank you. Okay. Seen other cards? No one on the queue? Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay, now the actions, counsel, next item, please.
That brings us to item 5B, called special for Cards, 5B.
Okay, we have two cards on 5B. That's John Walsh and Dal House Dude.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, right here, voter guide, go to it right now, find out our endorsements. This is actually only four minutes, it's my fourth minute. But in any case, the point here is these are hearing protests on liens. Lean means you didn't pay your taxes. And if you notice, if you're following on your scorecards, GGB Medical Management Services, sounds real important, they must help poor people. Eminence Home Care Health, they must help poor people. I want to know why there's a lien of $105,000, and also a lien of $5,000 for Eminence Health, Eminence Healthcare. What are these organizations? We have millions and millions in uncollected liens. What are you going to do? Use that money for the rewards? They're never going to get paid out? HollywoodHighlands.org.
Here we go again. Let's put a lien on the business, let's put a lien on the houses, and let's see, let's watch them squirm to see how they survive. And you're telling us that you are friendly to business. Don't you see how your thinking is totally convoluted, just to collect money? And you will do anything to collect money.
Mr. President, he is not talking about these liens.
I'm talking about the lien, you know? You don't like it, right? You're the ones that go around collecting the money. Hello, you are.
Please stay focused on the liens. Thank you.
Yes, you are teased with a license.
Okay. Seen other cards and no one on the queue? Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Yes, you are teased with a license.
Okay. Seen number cards and no one on the queue? Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay.
Mr. President, that brings us to general public comment.
Okay, let's bring up Roscoe McDonald Jr.
Mr. President, I'm Roscoe McDonald Jr. Thank you for your time here. My name is Roscoe McDonald Jr. I'm a degree from Harvard Law School University. I'm a Los Angeles City Attorney, Field Attorney. I was hired by Rocky Dal Giudino. I was given the attorney number of 1152, okay? I'm ready to proceed concerning the mayor. About 12 years ago, Antonio Vierigosa retired and appointed me, Roscoe McDonald Jr., to succeed him. I brought with me two legal documents to show you, my driver's license is B-995-6592, and also on the backside of it, we see the barcode here, okay? If there's a barcode specialist here, perhaps it is not, okay? But if it is, it says here that Roscoe McDonald Jr. is the king of America, okay? And that's a legal document right here for showing, okay? Also, I have a, I brought with me Department of Veterans Affairs, and it also has a barcode here that says Roscoe McDonald Jr. is the king of America. But the subject here this morning, the subject here is, who is the mayor? 12 years ago, Antonio Vierigosa retired, okay? And he appointed me to succeed him. Antonio, now, charges have been pressed in the Equal Opportunity Commission Office, 2010. Cause was found, and there are charge numbers, charges was pressed by me, and those charge numbers are in the computer, and a formal investigation is now ensued, and you will be contacted. And Antonio Vierigosa, he testified over 10 times that he did, in fact, appoint me to succeed him. My name is Roscoe McDonald Jr. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. President, City Council, Michael Waterman-Hubman with the Right to Share Food Coalition. At Right to Share Food, we believe that sharing food with our brothers and sisters is a fundamental human right. We believe that sharing food is a constitutionally protected activity guaranteed under the Freedom of Association Clause of the First Amendment. Conflict occurs when government and most office municipalities affect social engineering by restricting or forbidding sharing of food on public property, the commons, and even private property. I liken this kind of social engineering by cities to wildlife management. Problem is, we're talking about our human brothers and sisters. Why? I can't speak for these municipal wildlife managers. I can only guess. My guess is to why the sovereign would act in such a selfish and mean-spirited manner is greed. Poverty and homelessness are commonly viewed by some as, are, by some are, as, that are not similarly afflicted as messy and unsightly. The sight of homeless people and poor people lining up for a charitable meal makes it hard to convince oneself and others that all is not well in their area of interest. When property, when poverty and homelessness are not sufficiently hidden and dispersed, it tends to raise concerns among some who would worry about depressed commerce and property values. When homeless people gather in public, especially in numbers, they often generate a response by government to harass them with the goal of dispersing them.
Thank you, sir.
Right to Share Food.
Thank you very much. Daniel Jones, and then Arnold Sacks.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Daniel Jones. This budget presentation didn't include the question of why, or even the city controller sitting here is, why are you going to make a $32.5 million donation right off the top? My question is the timing of it. You've been working on this nonprofit plan for five years. The timing of it seems conspicuous to me. Why? Because you didn't have the money to give it five years ago. And it is rather suspicious to me, in my own opinion, ladies and gentlemen, of the court of public opinion in TV land, is if we're 50, or if we're still in deficit, why are you making a $32.5 million donation to the mayor of Los Angeles and all his cronies? It's an exit plan, period. Where's the justification? You just presented the justification in your budget plan. And there's a contradiction. He said, the budget director said, the CRA funds that come in from the defunct agency go straight to general fund. No, they didn't. They went to Zine, the CRA went to Zine's proposition last week. He had to, it went, so there's a funneling challenge there. This is for the city attorney. The mayor of Los Angeles on October 1st at 10:31 PM administered a loyalty test to the chief of police by asking him a question he could not hear. The loyalty test was, sir, can you please not enforce a law for 52 days in the city of Los Angeles? He'd allowed an occupation no matter what flavor it looked like, and the chief of police's response should have been unheard, unquestioned, and it's right here in the federal constitution. You are not allowed to answer a question you can't listen to. The chief of police said, he said, no, I'm a police officer.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, before I call the other public comment cards, we're going to go to item 24. Mr. Krikorian, I believe that you said it was okay for us to do that in open session?
Yes, Mr. President. Budget and Finance recommends approval of this.
Okay, Alan, I mean, Mr. Clerk, if you could read the item.
In the case entitled, item 24 in the case entitled Nick Ross and Others versus City of Los Angeles, there is recommendation to expend $295,000 in settlement.
Okay, no speakers in the queue? Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, Mr. Sacks, John Walsh, HollywoodHighland.org, Mr. Dude, followed by Henry Marine. John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. I've just been informed by the city clerk that you don't set aside any money for rewards. It doesn't exist. It's funny money. It's not in the budget. But you owe that money. So you are breaking accepted accounting rules. I like to point out, I go to front page online. I'm not joking when I say Los Angeles Mayor Vierigosa for Pope. Anybody, according to church law, is allowed to run for Pope as long as they're a baptized Catholic. I'm asking Cardinal Mahoney to put his name in the running. He needs a job. He'll never be elected governor. Let's get behind Antonio Vierigosa for Pope. And also, he's without sin, and he's the closest person to God.
Mr. President, the papacy is outside of the jurisdiction of the city of Los Angeles.
Okay, Mr. Walsh, bring it back to something under the city's jurisdiction. You're, I'm asking you to, this group, I believe the majority here are baptized Catholics here. I'm asking you to vote, to ask the cardinal to nominate Antonio Vierigosa for Pope. He needs the job. And also, know on all the money that you have promised for the, whoever tipped the police off on Dorna. Nobody tipped him off, not the people who were his victims. Why should we give money to the victims of Dorna when we have, we have Caranza, Margie Caranza and Emma Hernandez, who were victims of the LAPD, who were nine cops shot to kill them? They're not getting a dime. Why don't we, why don't we help these people? And as I've said before, if they had been black and working for the LA Times, the black community would be up in arms, but no one gives a damn. Thank you, Mr. Walsh, thank you. Mr. Dude, followed by Henry Marine, Vernita Marine.
Senor Walsh speaks the truth. Discretionary budget, that means you want to keep on creating your police state. Occupy LA, peaceful people were beat up by these Nazi-like techniques. So you want more money for more police? We don't need more police. We need housing for everyone so nobody goes around stealing each other's stuff. The city in the world that has the least crime is Tokyo, Japan. They do not go around bashing each other because they all have a little something. They are very productive, they produce more cars than the United States. A tiny little island showing the world what you can do when you use intelligence. We do not need any of this violence that the police exhibits. We do not need intimidation. We don't need any of those things. We need something for everybody, and we need to be taxed at a fair rate for everyone. Everybody needs to be producing, and you would be more productive if you had a place to live. And we are not creating a parallel system. Obama never talked about homelessness in his speech last night. He's only talking about the real estate industry giving new homes to young people at a better rate. You're still talking about taxing the people at every single moment of their lives. You are talking about modern-day slavery and anybody separating themselves by creed, color, and religion.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Henry Marine, followed by Vernita Marine, followed by Barbara Kozewitz. Anyway, I know I butchered that, but I'll let you come up and correct me. Mr. Marine.
Yes. MOU 35 shows every percent the city council authorized the CAO to shelter from the pay of others in need for up to six months. However, you've been doing it for 22 years. Consequently, the members of this council believe that city employees don't pay for their own benefits. That's because the CEO failed and refused to account for it in the first place. Care and citizen made it clear that we were being paid, using 1577, an hour was being sheltered for plumbers since 2007. In addition, 10% was being sheltered from the base pay. So that means $18 an hour. Now, you multiply that by time 1900, you're talking about $36,000 a year being sheltered from the pay of plumbers serving in the city of LA. That don't pay for benefits. Right now, our president, our vice president, and the entire executive board are city employees who have served under MOU 35. And we know the difference between separate and distinct rights to hours of service from union contractors and public sector employers, our public entities. Now, the money is commingled. I can't separate and distinguish the difference between what money is owed to me by union contractors under their benefit plan and what money is owed to me for service as a public sector employee. Now, your CEO has that duty, and Mr. Weston's got a duty to make him account for the separate and distinct monies of others in need. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marine. Vernita Marine, followed by Barbara, and I'll let you do the last name, and Yvonne, no, what did you tell me yesterday? Yvonne. Yvonne. Yvonne Michelle Altri. Yes. Yes, ma'am.
Good morning, good morning. My name is Vernita Marine. My husband has been here, and he's been coming here for three years, addressing, to address and inform this council of their obligation to account for this money that was sheltered, withdrawn and sheltered from his government paycheck while he worked under the HACLA and COLA MOUs. This sheltered money must be accounted for and rolled over either to an individual IRA account or to another government retirement plan, i.e. LACERS, or paid in full, subject to taxes to be paid by us. To date, this has not happened. This council body as a whole, and my CDA council person in particular, has done nothing to address this. My husband has no lofty credentials in which to ingratiate you or to impress you with, okay? What he does have is his 40-year history as a union member, a lifetime as a city, a lifetime as a city resident and taxpayer, and as a city employee. He has his passion and commitment to this matter. He, and he knows the history, he has facts, he has knowledge and wisdom. No one has addressed him. Please do not, please do not continue to ignore. Thank you.
Thank you. Please, Mr. Alacon.
I'd be happy to meet with the Marines as long as the wife comes along, because in all his presentations, I never understood what he was saying until she came forward and made that request. So I'd be happy to work with appropriate city units to try and help you through that issue.
And if I could get Ms. Altri to come forward. Yes, go ahead.
Good morning. My name is Barbara Kozewitz. It's a lot easier to say than to read. Okay, my husband, Bob, worked for the city in general services for 10 years and is an exempt employee under the MOU 35. MOU 35 was supposed to be for six months. He worked under it for 10 years before he was put in a permanent position in 2002. Money was withdrawn and sheltered from his pay. Unfortunately, my husband passed away in 2011, but he strongly believed in this, that was wrong, and I'm continuing it for him. This money still has to be accounted for, to my knowledge. The money is still sitting in a trust fund and CAO. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Altri.
Yes, thank you so much for pronouncing my name correctly. I've only been coming here about six or seven years. It's Yvonne, like Yvette, that should be simple enough, but thank you. I'd like to speak relative to the parks first. I know that you opened this park and a few other dog parks, and I know that the funds can now be unextracted from city, from city or state funds, and that was the technicality of the bureaucratic kind of BS by which, you know, they were limiting the funding that was released for Gladys and/or Julian. So again, in terms of civilization, community gathering, it's most important that we keep these parks available and open and discouraging any circulation of drugs and/or other paraphernalia. Ms. Parks love to celebrate OG Man, you know? Well, this is an opportunity, I'm sorry, not Mr. Parks, Ms. Perry, forgive me, Councilman Parks, forgive me, in that, Ms. Parks. You know, OG sponsors Father's Day celebrations every year at San Julian Park. It's an opportunity for us to continue to share and gather and participate in hopefully positive, more conducive community activities. I perform my poetry. We, you know, there are many activities that are positive, notwithstanding the CAA and the Para los Niños at Gladys. So we need to keep both parks open. I think you're trying to push the black people into the streets so the police you have commissioned to patrol downtown can then murder them, and you can justify it as, you know, putting them in the trash, whatever. It never gets reported. I've witnessed beating, so, you know, we know what's happening here, marginalization, elimination of people you don't really want here because you're still regentifying and developing that area. So I know you can find the money when you want to open your parks, okay? We need the parks open, so again, that's it about the parks. And relative to homeland security, please do not use that monies to surveil or harass people like myself that think and speak for themselves, or to commission torturing and covert civilian illegal experimentation, surveilling, entering our rooms, interrupting our mail service.
Thank you, thank you very much. Okay, Mr. Alacon, did you have something?
No.
Okay, so, all right. Mr. Clerk, I think we have one item left on the agenda. That item is a closed session item. Must you read it before we go into closed session, or can I direct the sergeants to clear the council chambers?
No, sir, you can, you can direct the sergeants. You can, you can direct the sergeants to clear the chamber.
Okay, we're going into closed session. Sergeants, please clear the chambers and notify me when it's clear. If I could ask you all to please exit. Mr. Marine, if I could ask you?
It just takes one cup.
Every year, thousands of children in our community drop out of school, they quit on their families, they give up on themselves, but together we can change that.
By sponsoring a child for the cost of one cup of coffee a week, you can provide a child with a mentor, a place to play.
In a safe haven like Hollenback Palace.
With one cup, I can play soccer after school.
With one cup, it helped me get here to college, preparing for my future.
It just takes a moment to change a child's life. Go to onecup.org and make a difference today.
Okay, we're now out of closed session. Mr. Clerk, I think you have, you or the city attorney have a duty to perform?
Yes, sir. And for item 25 in the case entitled Hill, RHF Housing Partners versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to approve settlement on the terms of the settlement that will satisfy plaintiffs for all payments made by plaintiffs with respect to assessments by the Downtown City Business Improvement District.
Thank you. So we don't have to re-vote on this, or we do? Okay, then let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, where are we now, Mr. Clerk, on the agenda?
Mr. President, council has motions for posting and referral.
Okay, consider them posted and referred.
The desk is clear.
Okay, announcements, announcements, members? Could everyone in the council chambers please rise for adjourning motions? Adjourning motions, Mr. Zine?
I have the formal adjourning motion now, Mr. President, for the officer whose services are being held at the present time, Officer Michael Crane. Riverside Police Department Officer Crane, 11-year veteran of the department, United States Marine veteran, ambushed by a suspect while on routine patrol, killed. This attack also left his partner injured. During the early morning hours of February 7th, Officer Michael Crane was gunned down and killed in an ambush while he was on patrol and parked at a stoplight with a trainee officer. Officer Crane was born in Anaheim to Stephen and Cindy on April 9th, 1978, the oldest of three children, had a brother, Jason, sister, Leslie. Raised in Riverside area, graduated from Redlands High School in 1996. After high school, attended Crafton High College in Ukiah, Ukaypa, for a year prior to enlist the United States Marine Corps. Served two deployment tours, Kuwait as a rifleman in the 15th Marine Unit, 3rd Battalion, 1st Marines, was a squad leader, promoted rank of sergeant, then stationed Camp Pendleton, Oceanside, California, where he taught marine operations in urban terrain. During his military service, he was awarded the Good Conduct Medal, the Armed Forces Medal of the Sea Service Deployment Ribbon with one-star certificate of commendation, rifle marksmanship badge. After being honorably discharged from the Marine Corps, joined the Riverside Police Department, graduated from the Riverside Sheriff's Academy Class Number 152, sworn in as a Riverside Police Officer on August 24th, 2001. Following his graduation from the field training program, he was assigned to field operations as a patrol officer during his 11-year tenure with the Riverside Police Department. Served as a patrol officer, assigned to the Special Weapons and Tactics SWAT team, also served as a helicopter observer, field train officer, firearms instructor, had been assigned to the University Neighborhood Enhancement Team. Had a big heart, enjoyed spending time with his wife, Regina, his son, Ian, age 10, daughter, Caitlin, Ian, age 10, daughter Caitlin, age 4. He loved attending dance recitals with his daughter and coaching his son's baseball team. Also loved his classic 1970 Chevy Nova, which he spent his spare time restoring. Mike's family and friends knew his unusually straight face, he had a huge personality. He made an unforgivable impression on everyone he met. He would be missed by his family, friends, his community. Public tribute held today at the Grove Community Church located in Riverside, California, survived by his wife and his two children. May he rest in peace, Officer Michael Crane, Riverside Police Officer.
Ms. Perry?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I'd like to adjourn in memory of Thomas Lorenzo Stevens, Jr. He is the past retired president of Los Angeles Trade Technical College, and he was an active member of the community. In his time, he served as member of the boards of the Federal Reserve Bank of San Francisco, the Braille Institute, Albertson's, Goodwill Industries, and later as honorary chairman for the Boy Scouts of America, the Opportunities Industrialization Centers, and the Salvation Army. He was a graduate of the University of Arkansas at Pine Bluff, and later earned a master's in business administration from the University of Southern California. He is survived by his devoted wife of 57 years, Opal, his brother, William Calian Stevens of San Francisco, and many other family and friends, and he will be sincerely missed.
Mr. Weezer?
Thank you, Mr. President, and colleagues. I ask that we adjourn today in memory of someone who, when you mention his name to many people, it just brings a smile to your face. I'm talking about Manny Rojas, or Manuel Rojas, the owner of El Tepeyac in Boa Heights. He made famous the Manuel special, or the Hollenback burrito, which many people claimed they could finish, but nobody ever did finish those burritos. He passed away yesterday. He was 79 years old, and he passed away at White Memorial Medical Center in Boa Heights. For more than four generations, Manuel Rojas greeted people at the El Tepeyac restaurant with a huge smile. Sometimes when you go there for breakfast, he'd also bring out the tequila bottle, and although you would say, no, 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 somehow you'd find a shot glass in your, taking a shot glass early morning. He, the El Tepeyac Cafe was founded in 1942 by the Rojas family at a restaurant originally called El Dominata Cafe, located downtown LA. They then moved to Lincoln Heights before settling in 1952 in Boa Heights, where it is now known as El Tepeyac Cafe. He is credited with creating the original Hollenback burrito, as I mentioned, a delicious and extremely filling meal. If you're really hungry, you could try the even larger burrito there, that is a five-pound burrito. After the ill-timely death of his father, Salvador Rojas, Manuel stepped in and along with his mother, Rebecca, took over the restaurant and built it to become one of Los Angeles' most treasured neighborhood restaurants. Manuel and his family have always been extremely generous with their support of community groups and events. Roosevelt High School has always commented on how grateful they are for the support that the restaurant gives them each and every year, as well as the Local Optimists Club and the Rotary Club. In 2009, it was a banner year for Manuel and El Tepeyac. They were featured on the National Travel Channel's Man vs. Food, and it brought in new customers from all over the country to try and eat the Manuel's special burrito. Many have tried, but few have succeeded, as I mentioned. And currently, the honor of being named number 23 in the Travel Channel's 101 Best Chow Downs in America has brought renewed national attention. Many websites such as Yelp.com and CitySearch.com and others have rated Manuel's a four-star restaurant. And a lot of that can be attributed to Manuel's dedication and work ethic. He would start up at the kitchen at 3:00 AM every day, seven days a week, and stick around for breakfast through lunch, doing what he loves best, welcoming everyone with a kiss for the ladies and a hug for the men. His appreciation and adoration of his friends and customers continued, as I said, for four generations. Since the passing of Manuel Rojas, the blogosphere is full of testimonials from all over the country for those who visited El Tepeyac, whereas much as, not only the great food that they're commenting on, but the kindness and attention that Manuel gave to everyone who came in. As someone who ate at their restaurant many times throughout the years, I can attest that Manuel Rojas was like family to many in the neighborhood, and he will surely be missed.
Mr. Weezer, I can't envision a football player being able to eat a five-pound burrito. Mr. Labanche?
I just, I know Mr. Zine will get the name on Friday of the San Bernardino Sheriff, who tragically lost his life yesterday. So we should remember him, and his name has not been released as yet, but we will get that information. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay. Any more adjourning motions? Seeing none, members, this meeting is adjourned.